Good evening.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming. This is a meeting of the Board of Trustees, County of Buena Vista, Colorado. It's July 8th, 2020, and the time is 7:02 PM. Ed, would you call the roll place?
Rusty Swisher.
Yes.
Rusty Stern.
Here.
Rusty Rowe.
Here.
Rusty Rice.
Here.
Hike.
Here.
Eric Bay.
Here.
Please join me in the plenary. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let's see if you have before you a proposed agenda. Does anyone have any modifications to the agenda? And if there are none, I would take a motion to adopt it.
We adopt the agenda as written.
I'll second.
I have Rice and Hike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, the agenda is adopted. And then you also have the consent agenda. So it has the minutes of our last meeting, as well as from the beautification board, reports from the police chief, the planning director, the public works director, the town treasurer, and the town clerk. Stuff in there. Does anybody have any items in the consent agenda that they would like to pull out of there so that we could discuss them further? Okay. Hearing no changes, I would like a motion.
I'll second.
So we got Hike and Stern. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes. Consent agenda is adopted. Now we go to public comment. And we have Dr. Eric Gibb here to talk about the splash park. So would you approach the podium and give us your name and whether you are a resident of Buena Vista? And then you have three minutes to present your issue.
Thank you so much, Dr. Eric Gibb, 230 North Gunnison Avenue, Buena Vista, Colorado. See some familiar faces from 15 years ago when I was on the board. Joel was mayor, Philip and I were on the board. I'm president of the Optimus Club in town, and if you're not familiar, we're a community group primarily dedicated to the support of children in our community. We're fortunate enough to be able to give large amounts of money to scholarships at the high school, as well as support about 30 other different charitable organizations that are primarily for kids in the community. The other thing we do is that we've been involved and built various things in the community, including the bike or the skate park, the river park we're involved in, and the splash park. And we noticed that this year it doesn't seem to be running that often. So my ask is that we would like to know why that is. We negotiated with the real estate organization that owned the building. We got them to give us the land on the corner for a couple of dollars forever. We raised money for the splash park. It used to be a mess of junipers and not very pretty. Thanks to the work of the community, I think it's a real focus of attention and pride in the community, and I'd just like to see it working. If it's a matter of a mechanical thing that's not a budgetary item, the Optimus would be obviously willing to donate whatever money is necessary to get it to work. If it's a water thing, I understand there's concerns about water in the community, but I would be interested in knowing really how much water it uses, as there are a lot of other places where we could save water rather than take that particular feature away from kids. So that's my comments, and anybody who'd like to get ahold of me, I think most people know how to get ahold of me in the community, and I thank you for your service. And if you can tell us how we can help get our splash park up and running, the Optimus Club would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's remember to talk about that trustee staff.
If you'd like.
If you're all right with it, I can.
Sure, no, that'd be great.
So yeah, it was a matter of the water, you know, kind of water availability in this particular year has been difficult with kind of the water treatment plant at the home stretch of the improvement project, and so we're still relying on the old infiltration gallery on Erie, Cleveland. And so the last meeting we did pass as far as a kind of outside watering schedule, so Public Works, you know, specifically the water department, were straining, and so that's why it kind of was a lag to open. We did put up a sign that identified that going forward, we'll have it open for kind of a set period of time each day. We're going to try noon to 2:00 initially, and then also has a QR code that has additional information on water conservation efforts and water restrictions and stuff like that. So that's the reasoning, not necessarily a mechanical thing, but a water-wise decision coming from Public Works, but we're trying to get the word out there and the reasoning, but also make it available during the hottest period of the day.
Can I make one further comment? There's not, no, okay.
I'd like to hear what your comment is.
Well, I certainly understand, I've been living here for 30 years, I certainly understand the water concerns, and certainly there is a use of water. I would just ask that maybe we take a look at other areas where water is used in the community and how much the splash park really, you know, we don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. I know, for instance, that as much as 60,000 gallons of water was used in one day by the school the other day, and so it may be that a little bit of, anyway, I would ask you to consider that. I certainly understand the sensitivity of water in the community and appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's the only person who signed up for a public comment. Did you all mean to be speaking at public comment?
No.
No.
Okay. Because there is also one public hearing tonight that has to do with some code changes, in case you were here for that. Okay. So speaking of that one, let's go ahead with the municipal code changes. Is this Joel or is it?
Hey, Ray, would you have one presentation identified, correct, business side of?
Okay. Oh, of course.
Risk management.
Okay. So I'd like to have Mr. Rich Atkins come and speak to us.
Good evening. It's been a few months since I spoke to you guys. Thank you for inviting me again. First of all, to give you an update on what we've been doing in preparedness activities for the county, which involves every one of the municipalities. We're working on two big projects. One is evacuation and reunification. And part of that is included, what's included in that is not only the evacuation, the traffic routes, depending on where the incident is, but also sheltering. And so as part of that, this year, we're also updating most, trying to update most of our agreements for sheltering within town and within the county. Working with Red Cross on their standardized evaluations of the facilities. Our problem with Red Cross is most of the time they won't be here. It'll probably take two or three days for them to have enough staff to be able to come up here and to assist us. So most of our shelter operations are not overnight sheltering. There are the reunification, there are the needs assessments, there are the making sure people are getting out. So those are the type of shelters that we do, and we don't use Red Cross to assist us in those. So that's one big project we're working on, and both of those, we're doing a lot of training. We have a training on evacuation or reentry for our emergency response agencies and others that want to attend in two weeks here in town, so that we can update our evacuation or reentry plan, that the last time it was updated was in 2018. So we're working on that. We're also working on our county's recovery plan for any major incident, and then as part of that recovery plan, we're doing the damage assessment annex update. Because of all the changes that the state has done on the information that we have to provide, and we're working that annex up also in the next six months. As far as BV, BV, we updated our county emergency operation plan last year, which includes BV. But the more and more that we've talked with the different administrators, having a separate annex for each of the municipalities is important. Right now, we got all the roles and responsibilities all collaged together in the county plan, but I want to break it out so that each municipality works a little different. So that'll be a project that I want to do. Your last time your plan was updated was 2016, and it was a separate plan. It was based on a template that the state had, but we've modified that template quite a bit. So that's a project I want to start working on with the municipality staff and you and the board to try to get that updated by the end of the summer if we can. Second is the training, training for all of us. But one of the biggest things that we want to do is train you guys. I've had several of you come up to me and ask for different types of training of what your responsibilities are during a disaster. So we have, we did it here two, three years ago.
Three years.
Yeah, and there's been quite a bit of turnover, so we want to do that again. Basically, I bring in my state regional coordinator, he and I present what your responsibilities are, what resources do you have during a disaster, what are the steps of doing an emergency declaration? Just so you know, when it does happen, what do you need to do to be able to qualify for funding and stuff from the state? And then how to, what, why do we do an emergency declaration? You know, we did it during Decker, excuse me, during COVID to modify some of our policies for an emergency, but there's other reasons why you want an emergency declaration. So we want to work with you to train you, to show you how that works and what your responsibilities are. Second type of training is, you know, is ones that we provide for our first responders. It's called Incident Command System. You know, you don't need the full gamut that the fire chief, police chief, even the regular responders go out. You need to know what it's about and where you fit into it. And so I will be doing those. I want to do, and I haven't talked with Brian about it, but do a more of a non-emergency responder 102-er class. What we just talked about, if an emergency happens, where do you fit in? What position you are and how do you work with the emergency responders? You know, and that's for our public works, our airport staff, those type of things. So it's all of the non, like I said, non-emergency response personnel. And it could, and I want to include search and rescue because they're always asking for that. So I'm open to any suggestions on who to include in those classes, but one of the things that we want to do is nail down, it's called overview for executive officials, and it's just not the Board of Trustees, it's the department heads. It's working with the fire district, with the fire ward. We want them as part of it, and they want to be part of it, so they understand where that separation occurs. What's your responsibility? What's your responsibility? Depending on where the fire is, it's big, important, and who pays the bills? So I want to make sure that we work together on that. So those are the two biggies that we want to look at, but I want to give you a couple of other things that we're working on. We're working on this MOUs with the schools. We're providing exercises that we're doing, that we want to make sure you're invited for. So I'll be pushing more of that information to Brian so he can get it to you on that because you're always invited, no matter what it is. We're going to be doing a, the electrical co-op, we're doing an exercise with them in August, and that's, it's very important, it's how we're going to take care of any of the alignment that are heard or people that are electrocuted and how we're going to get them out. So we're working with EMS, we're working with the hospital, we're working the sheriff's office, we're working with the fire district. So you'll see that coming up also. We just finished the mass casualty incident exercise. It was a tabletop theoretically, it was up in granite involving buses and a lot of injuries and stuff, and how we work together, not only with reach, with the hospital, with EMS, sheriff's office, et cetera, on how we coordinate getting those people medical assistance, but also how, because there are also children involved, you know, how we do the reunification process. Not school children, that age, but not on school buses. It's big tourist-type buses, and we're doing the after-action. It was a great day, had a full room at the heart of the Rockies, we had a full room up at Leadville because a lot of the patients went north and some went south, so we worked that together. So I want you to know, we do try to plan, train, and exercise those type of incidents so when they do happen. You know, we all feel bad, you know, the tragedy that happened in Texas. We don't want that to happen here, even though they probably hadn't. There was no mitigation measures they could have done, but we want to make sure we're looking at that here. We have camp kids up on Mount Princeton area, I'm working with their camps, working with H2As, and how do we get the people out? How do we get the warnings to them ahead of time, especially when you get farther up on Mount Princeton on 162 without cell coverage and stuff? How do we get that word out? So we are working that. But yeah, I've had a lot of questions. Yesterday, I was with the, giving my quarterly report with the county commissioners, and that was heavy on their mind also. But we want to make sure we're doing everything we can to protect our people. And one thing about Buena Vista, even though the county's main threat is wildfires, as most of you know, Buena Vista is high on the flooding threat. It's who we want to work that more as we go forward, to make sure not just the flooding from any of the lakes up in Lake County, dams having failures and stuff, but also cotton wood and anything else coming down. But I want to be able to report to you regularly so you understand what threats that we're trying to work on and have any of your input that you would like to make.
Sounds like we're on the same page.
So I guess just let me know on the date when you guys make a decision. We'll also be doing another one in the south side with Slider and the commissioners. So if you can't make the one up here, have the one down there also. It's pretty standard, you know, what your responsibilities and what your authorizations are, so either one of them will work. Any questions?
Questions for Rich?
I have a question. You were talking about evacuations, and recently we had issues with the music festival here with a lot of traffic. I wonder if you take any of that into account or thinking about that when you think about the evacuations, because that was, you know, less than 10,000.
We definitely did, in all the planning meetings, my discussions with the sponsors of the event, working on, you know, I worked heavily with them on their emergency action plan for the event. Evacuation was a biggie, and it wasn't, yeah, most of what their responsibility is for the people in there, but working with, I am now part of the sheriff's office. They moved me from under the commissioners to under the sheriff's office to help them understand some of the emergency management functions and help them understand and help them train on some of the, those functions that the state has given responsibility to the sheriff. So we looked at that heavily, being able to, you know, when an incident occurs, making sure we have enough staff, making sure we have those key traffic direction points, and being able to push people out, depending on where the threat is, whether it's a flood, whether it's a fire, whether it's an active shooter, how we get those people out, it's very difficult. And when you're working with non-emergency responders, which most of their, what's called black shirt security and stuff that they do, our experience, my experience working at Oklahoma State University for almost 40 years, working football games and stuff, they're the first people that run, you know? So we have to make sure we have measures in place to keep people in those key spots that we know aren't going to run. And most of those are our emergency responses. And how do we get people out, direction of travel, that's all important, and that's really important when you have a large crowd.
Yeah, because, you know, when people weren't evacuating, they were just leaving the festival, and there was people waiting for hours to get out of the valley, and, you know, that makes me concerned, what's going to happen when people are actually trying to evacuate, if there's just people, 10,000 people trying to leave and then they get gridlocked.
You know, I observed a lot, but I would love your feedback. Send me an email with the information, because we will have an after-action meeting before we even talk about August, you know, at the Meadows. We, because we want to make sure that we're fixing the issues, you know, because this is one of the bigger ones that we've had in a long time since Seven Peaks, but we want to make sure that we're catching all that. So if you saw something you'd like to let us know, let me know so we can work on it.
Yeah.
So it doesn't occur next time. But yeah, it's the post-evacuator, when people leave after the incident is over, that there's no traffic control. I saw that.
Right.
And we need to have those key spots covered.
Yeah, I think that's probably what the issue was.
And we had issues going in because going up across, across, if you were coming from the east to the west, you couldn't turn in. You had to go all the way down, make a U-turn to come back, because they were only letting in one direction. So we don't know how much push, information push they did on that.
Right.
Would it be better to do it the other way, you know, or do it alternating to get the people in, because it created a major traffic issue as people tried to turn around?
Yeah.
So, but yeah, any of that type of stuff, let me know, and we can definitely bring it up at the after-action report.
Yeah.
Be. Cool, I think it's an interesting thing to look at, to kind of see like a small version of something that never happens, so.
I have two comments to that. I do think that it put our citizens and our tourists at risk for several hours if there would have been a true emergency, whether it was a child drowning, somebody on the river, someone, local citizen having a heart attack, our emergency personnel could have, couldn't have gotten to them in a decent amount of time. I thought those people did not arrive all at once, and one way of dealing with that would be to allow only a certain number of vehicles to leave the venue, and they clear town before they release more. The concert people should have traffic personnel that the concert pays for to direct traffic, because when I was in traffic, you could sit through, be the first car in line and sit through a green light three or four times because they had all jammed the intersection trying to get on East Main. East Main was backed up because of the stoplight that is where you stop on Railroad Street, and it was a cluster mess. And I didn't realize what I got into when I left the cemetery, because when I went to the cemetery, there wasn't any traffic, and it took me 45 to 50 minutes to get home from the cemetery to my house.
So please share that with me and share that with the commissioner.
Amount at a time, I think, would be.
Please send me that right now, and I can definitely share it with the venue sponsors, but also with the commissioners, because they definitely have control, you know? Anything that we've asked for, the commissioners have mandated that they do it for us, so.
Is there more, Cindy? Do you have more to say?
No, that's, that's good.
Thank you for saying that. Andrew?
Just a quick echo what Cindy said. On Thursday, my mom fell here in town, and I had to take her to the ER, so she called me, and I went over there, and on Sunday, when I saw the traffic, I thought, holy crap. I am so glad I'm not trying to get my dark day.
Yeah, I got stuck in it Thursday morning, and it took me over an hour to make the loop to come back around. Yeah, it's just tough.
People were having trouble with cell phones as well, dropping a lot of calls.
Yeah, that's one thing we tried, we've been working on. Verizon did put a new tower in, but they put another 4G in. You know, that's one thing we did ask for a 5G, which increases the bandwidth so much. We're going to keep pushing on to try to get a little bit better coverage.
Yes, because all your emergency services are based off of that, correct?
Well, like me, I carry an AT&amp;T, a Verizon, a T-Mobile, and a satellite phone. Depending on where I'm at in the county, one of them will make a connection. And.
Is that a reach for motion?
Right now, T-Mobile is the only one that does 5G in the county, and at my EOC, Verizon and AT&amp;T has very little coverage, whereas T-Mobile, I have three to four MARS during the event, and I use my hotspot at the event, and I had no problem making connection. And we probably had 10 people in the command post working off of it. So we're working on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Feel free to give me a call about anything, send me any requests, any questions.
Lots of other emails coming in.
And I'm cordial, please.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we are ready for Joel or Rica in terms of the proposed changes to the unified development code.
We work together, but Joel's going to present. He did a lot of heavy lifting on this.
All right.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and where do you jump in? Whatever.
When whatever. Um so this is um periodically, we, you know, over the course of time, I kind of keep track of different notes that uh that require some sort of change or nuisances to the staff, you know, dealing with the code or complaints from the citizen, hey, I can't I don't understand this part of the code, et cetera. And so we compile those and we bring them forward appropriately for um consideration for code amendments. Uh these are all within chapter sixteen, Unified Development Code. Um and so this is following the public hearing process versus went through Planning Zoning Commission um and for recommendation um and it's followed by board trustees. So we're going to go through um a few this evening. There's um quite a few, some more substantive than others. Um in the packet, there's we included a red line version, uh well, an ordinance and the red lines within the ordinance show what has changed from the existing code. Um there's also a clean version of that. So all the red lines are turned to black and then the the parts that were stricken out are removed. Um we also included an Excel spreadsheet that goes along with that that shows the section the proposed code change and a little bit of the rationale why. Um and then the version of the ordinance that was presented to Planning Zoning Commission is also in there. Um so we'll run through these. This is a public hearing. So after the staff uh presentation and any clarifying questions, we can open up the public comment. Um and then you all can deliberate, ask questions, et cetera, et cetera. So um these code changes. Um one, they either need some kind of clarification um or we need to establish some kind of added process. Um other, there are also code changes um that are kind of make it difficult to use the the lot for drainage or for parking or access to your building. Um and a lot of this comes from Public Works having uh concerns specifically about drainage and maintenance. There's some codes that help kind of clean up the community and there's some definitions. Um either we've added a few definitions and and changed one definition. Um all of the planning and zoning amendments, there were four recommended amendments. These are all reflected within um this ordinance. So um and they it was unanimous approval with them. Uh as a reminder for changes to Unified Development Code, uh the board is charged with considering whether and to what extent, quote unquote, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The proposed change does not conflict with other provisions of the UDC or Town Code, is necessary to address a demonstrated community need and is necessary to respond to changing policy or conditions, is consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning districts in the UDC, would have uh would improve compatibility among land uses or would result in an orderly and logical development pattern uh and codes that need clarification or are used to establish proper processes. You might recall um we did change the code a little while ago that allowed for like real minor adjustments to happen administratively. Uh these are except for the very first one, but it kind of tees off everything else. These are all outside of that. So they need, we feel that they require a review. Um so I'm going to run through the proposed changes. Um I did include um in this slide, just a couple. There was one public comment that we all received an email about with regarding eaves and setbacks and encroachments and setbacks, side setbacks. And so I put a couple of slides in there just to help give some context. So anyway, the first one is just to renumber uh tables. There's two table two point eights and we need that to not be the case. We need table two point eight, table two point nine, et cetera. So that's the first change. Um and and might I say um those criteria, I I'm not going to go through why we feel they address particular criteria. If you guys have questions, we're going to address those. Okay, but so. Um the second one, um so this is specifies a development on multiple lots still requires lot consolidation. There are two notes and a couple of tables that says, hey, if you have old time lots, you 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 know, you you can't build on more than two lots or fewer than three, whatever that language is. But it doesn't say um you actually have to consolidate the lots because right now you can't build a building over a lot, a lot line. And so this clarifies um mostly just to reduce back and forth with developers. It's already legally covered, but it just helps us kind of clarify.
Next, please.
Um this third one deals with setbacks in MU one, MU two as well as uh high commercial, industrial and open space um and recreational. Uh right now, MU one, MU two, the setback is zero and we're proposing to um create it to three feet um or go from zero to five feet. This is uh specific because just to allow room for drainage, allow room for maintenance on the building, allow room for um uh other other concerns because like Public Works in particular are concerned about the drainage in between in between buildings. And often we get to a project and it's zero to lot line and then they have an eve on top of that or they didn't properly plan for their guttering, et cetera. And all of a sudden you have um spillage into someone else's property or um too close to their own property to to be able to deal with that maintenance. Yeah.
Just to make sure I'm following. Number three reduces setbacks. Is that, are we increasing this?
Uh increase. That's that is the typo I was saying. I forgot to change.
Okay, so you it's an increase in the setback.
Right. Okay, we're creating the setback from zero to three. Yeah, yeah. That's the typo. I knew it. Just told Brian.
Andrew has an eagle eye.
I just want to make sure like I'm understanding it correctly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And this is something that, uh you know, we created the UDC. It sounded great, but once we start actually taking a look at the site, the site plans, et cetera. There's a lot of pushback with with folk and then this just helps everybody, you know, uh uh on town side. Um we also have a proposal to reduce building coverage uh in MU one from eighty percent to seventy uh for alley loader, alley access and sixty-five percent for street loaded, street access and then MU one go from ninety to eighty. Um the math doesn't really work uh at all because like in that the when you have ninety percent coverage and ten percent landscaping. That's hundred percent. Well, where are you putting your parking? You know, you've and and mostly people come in uh to see the ninety percent coverage. They put their billing plans together and bring it in and then we say, well, what about these other things? And so it's it it creates a difficult spot for planning department. Um next, so uh the next one, number five, and and these numbers, number five, number six, et cetera, this corresponds to the section within the ordinance. So um so this adds a footnote um specifically that uh it says that landscape landscaping excludes parking because that is also something that's routinely um back and forth. Well, you don't count your parking space as landscaping. And there's there's it's just not clear. So there's always that back and forth. That. Uh number six, this is a public comment. Um so this only with the side setback, three foot setback. Right now, um you can put a um you can encroach within you a setback up to twenty-four inches. And so this is reducing that um to a manageable size where you can encroach it or you can maintain um maintain the gutter, paint the fascia board, et cetera, right? Uh um so it's reducing that so you're not spilling out and having to um put a ladder on someone else's property in order to get up to your building. So this is, there's a couple of slides.
Um yeah, and that's only for the three foot setback.
Only for the three foot setback.
Properties that have five foot side setback will continue to have the allowance of that twenty-four inch encroachment. We're just talking about when you've got that really narrow front setback reducing the allowance of the encroachment.
Um and we we propose nine inches. Uh the original idea was no encroachments allowed at all because of these maintenance concerns. Uh a typical eve is twelve to twenty-four inches. So I does have in their code that uh an eighteen inch encroachment into a five foot setback. So that still is three and a half feet right from the side. Um and so, yeah, you know, the one one comment, hey, if we change this, we're going to lose some interior space. Yeah. There's a house, you know, just down the road and it's an eighteen foot wide house. Okay, where where old um town administrator has and there's a twelve inch encroachment eve that encroaches into it. Well, so you have, I mean, you fit right within that nine inch, you know. You do the math. You have a twenty-five foot wide lot, eighteen foot house and you're only encroaching six inches on each side.
Your your point here is if you have a two or three story house and you've got to clean your gutters, your ladder needs to be on your property.
Yeah, unless you have some sort of good relationship that you can't count on with your your neighbor, right? So um anyhow, here's a just what is twelve inches, what is twenty-four inches? I tried to take some some photos here that the one on the left is boulders. There's a sixteen inch eve. There's uh the plants have a twelve foot separation. It doesn't look like that, but that's what the plans have said. Anyway, it's not encroaching. Um the other, the two in the middle, that's about a twelve foot eve in between and those are on the lot line.
Twelve inch.
Uh yeah, twelve inch. Thank you. Um on the right, the one on the left, you can see there's a the size of that eve, it's a twenty-four inch eve and the other is a twelve inch. So next slide, Brian. Um here's some other properties that are um built, you know, right up to the setback and there are no eaves. You know, so that nice architecturally sound buildings, the next one. Um and uh just for again, these are twelve inch eaves on each building. There are no gutters. So if you had a gutter, that'd be seventeen inches, but part of the issue with the no gutter is that roof, all that water drains under the neighboring property.
The opposing property.
Right. Um and then this on the right, the building, uh the one on the left is is gray and the one on the right is blue. It's a ten inch eve on that blue uh the blue building. Just so you know, for architectural, that was one of the concerns that was brought in the public comment. So um for what it's worth, those are some images for y'all to ponder. Next one, please. So the next few sections in the code, um section seven, eight, nine and ten, this includes the requirement for a neighborhood meeting specifically for a sketch plan and a major site plan. Right now, the um there is no real public process uh until pretty far down the line and um really for for a major subdivision until preliminary plat, at which point you've expended um tens of thousands of dollars in engineering, et cetera, and you come to uh the Planning Zoning Commission and there's some change that they want to make or public, the public comes out and expresses themselves. Um and at that point, uh there's a lot of pressure put on planning department, planning zoning commission and the board trustees and say, how can you make me change my plan now when I'm just getting this input at this point, kind of late in the game. So this introduces a neighborhood meeting that's put on and the same thing happens with the major site plan, right? So this this is a meeting that is uh very common in many jurisdictions. Um and the meeting has to be put on, held by the applicant. Um they hold the meeting, they gather, there's a there's a uh public notification process involving mailers and posting of a sign. Um here's my project. Okay, I gather all the input. And then there's a requirement for the developer to take note of that input and when they prior to the sketch plan submit um a report to the planning department that says here's the comments and here's how we are going to seek to address these or here's why these things do not need to be addressed because, you know, it's a use by right or et cetera.
Is it, in that case, the developer would say, I scheduled my meeting on December twenty-fifth at nine AM and nobody came.
Well, well, there is a preapproval. You have to have it approved through the planning department.
Okay, so there is some oversight to make sure that it's not just a forest.
Yeah, um it has to be scheduled through the planning department. But they're they're holding it. The planning staff can come.
Right.
Um so there's a few a few code changes that, you know, parts of the code that we had to change in order to include neighborhood meeting is a thing. Um eleven and twelve, this is also um right now for a sketch plan, a public meeting is required, but not a public hearing. So there's actually no notification that has to go to neighbors or signs, posting, et cetera, for a sketch plan. And we would like that to be a requirement that the neighbors are told, hey, we're having this sketch plan. Next, please. Um number thirteen, uh we need to add two words for talking about how measurements work instead of between, we need at or between these two uh two distances. Um the next fourteen, this adds um it helps develop uh uh denote where the building envelope for garage would be. Uh right now, there's a there's a setback, but people have been um, you know, building pretty close to the alley where um a car can kind of fit and they think it's a parking space, but it's not. And so what's the option? Well, they stick out into the alley. And so we want to say either you build the the your garage has to be between zero and five feet, meaning there's only four foot and you can't actually park there or um greater than eighteen feet.
I do think it should be at or between for that as well. So somebody could do a zero foot setback for the garage or they could do a five foot setback.
Well, it should be at or between if the board would like that. Um next slide, please. Just a few more here, board. Um this. Okay, so this is uh addresses some cleanup, but it also addresses bicycle parking. There's a section about requirements, parking requirements and then parking alternatives and some of the language is kind of mixed up in there through past code process. Um so we're cleaning up that language. Uh we're also stating that uh clearly that a single family dwelling unit is not does not is not required to provide that that bicycle rack, that bicycle parking. Um and because it's not required to provide that bicycle parking, you can't get your parking relief. If you add rack, well, you still have to provide off-street parking. Um we also have put forth um is there some, go back to the and there's also some language in there that adds a cash-in lieu um for that parking relief for bicycle parking. We anticipate uh it's a percentage of, so it's not going to be a full vehicular parking space relief, but just a fraction. That fee has to be set if he's scheduled. This language allows that to be to happen. Thank you. Next. I apologize for the length of this, but there's a lot of code changes, you know. Um so this sets forth, if you guys remember, we've had we had a couple of requests for um cash-in lieu for parking and it was a little jumbled like what process, at least we felt it on our side, what process are we using for this? Because there wasn't anything. So it sets forth this um a process. Um it uses the existing variance process. We say you have to special cash-in lieu for biking, bicycle parking application, and then there's different criteria, but we follow the whole public process. And then there's different criteria, but we follow the whole public process, et cetera, as the various variance process does. Um, meeting, you guys would have to go uh, enter in as the board of adjustments and make that decision and come back as board of trustees. Do the same thing, but it's a different function, which is kind of exciting when you get.
I think most importantly, the public, the neighbors will get notified and that has not been happening with parking cash-in lieu requests.
Yeah, thank you for that, absolutely. Um, we also, there was that one low criteria that said, this can't be for reasons of convenience or economic burden. Uh, so we just struck or economic burden off of that. Okay, um, about sidewalk signs, but we have, you, you see Main Street is getting more and more cluttered. And uh, there's a bigger, broader s- uh, encroachment on the Main Street conversation that uh, we'll be preparing for. This does set some regulations around the use of sidewalk signs or sandwich boards. So that's what this does. Um, and it also allows that the town administrator can, uh, this was added by planning zoning, but the town administrator or his or her designate can remove signs that are put in the town right away or C D R right away. Grant has permission to do that from C dot. So um, this just gives out authority, it wouldn't just happen. We would go and say, hey, we're gonna have to remove your sign because as long as we, there's contact information for that person. But it does give town that authority without having to go through some sort of a um, municipal court process.
One of the questions that planning and zoning commission asked is also, yes, would you make an effort? And I think if it's a realtor's sign, obviously we would contact the realtor to say, hey, your sign. Um, if if the sign has contact information on it and we can trace who it belongs to, we will do our best to make sure that we notify folks. Um, for those, you know, signs that get placed that don't have any contact information and it's not easily traceable, that might be more difficult. Uh, and then I talked to Grant today, he also has the ability for railroad right away.
Uh, one, one previous, please. So the next are some definitions. Um, one outlaw, outlaw, I should say outlawed uh, versus a tract. Uh, tract right now is, there are two different things. Tract is a piece of land that you set aside essentially so you can't build on. It's like open space or something, it's not intended for future development. And an outlaw would be intended for future development. When you put those on a plat, outlaw one, tract A, they should be consistent with the intended use. And if right now the town definition has uh, tract, also see, also known as an outlaw, right? As the definition and uh, down the line, we'll have a subdivision, major subdivision. And it says, it's supposed to be a park, but it's called an outlaw. And that some future landowner could say, hey, this has always been intended to um, develop, not as a park, but as something else. And so there's the distinction, outlaw is added, tract is edited. We have vertically mixed use, which is referred to in primary use. These are referred to in the code of other places, but there's no definition. It's created some confusion. Infield development has also uh, been questioned. And so um, we delete um, scattered, we add unused, underutilized, which is also sort of a ambiguous term, underutilized. But uh, we do add reference to Old Town at nineteen oh five, so we can concentrate infrastructure and services. So um, with that, the, those are our changes. Uh, we invite any clarifying questions. Um, hold the deliberation for a little later, open up to public comment, close the hearing, deliberate, ask more questions. I guess, well, before you close the hearing, and then you guys can discuss motion to approve, approve with amendments, deny or continue the hearing. Uh, note, there was that um, Marika did add that one little potential amendment at or between, so just.
Any questions?
Is there any public?
Go ahead, Sydney.
I was gonna ask if there was any public comments.
Oh, we're not quite to that point yet. Thank you.
And the next slide is, again, just to remind you all, thank you.
Um, back to the garages and the alleys, I think that was section fourteen. Is zero to five feet enough to deter folks from parking sideways on the apron?
In my experience, it has been, uh, it is sufficient. And I would say that that's uh, not necessarily C dot standard, but talking about Laramie County urban street standards and my experience on the front branch, that was uh, what was established there was that zero to five feet. And we dealt with that a lot and it seemed to deter folks from parking sideways, with the exception of things like mopeds and motorcycles. But they sufficiently fit, so it was less of a concern.
Maybe uh, the parking space size in the code is a nine foot wide by twenty-two feet. So that does, I mean, that's too wide, but. Just some.
Even for a compact car, uh, zero to five feet is is pretty narrow.
Other questions for, for Joel or or Marika? Or Jeff? Or Brian?
Uh, I did want to know who the board of adjustment was, so that answers.
I thought it was a car.
My question is, over the last few meetings, we've had to um, approve stuff where the buildings have been encroached into right away. Would these setbacks help avoid that? Because it seems like we're getting an awful lot of that. As a board, we have every right to say, tear the wall down and rebuild it. But that would make us pretty jerky if we did that. But in some cases where they do encroach on the right away, it's a true inconvenience. So I wanted to know if that would help with that.
I think it, I think it would, I think there are, um, the P U D is a little different because of the lot line, the lot line building. So um, it would help in that um, it would remove some of the ambiguity of kind of, um, well, I guess I should say, like, if you're building a lot line, often the building will be designed to build to that. And it's not until later that you're like, oh, hey, I forgot about this little, you know, the gutter spout. Right? And where am I going to put that? Um, so it does, it does allow for something like that within the setback, but it also um, just kind of re- reduces that risk for most of town. That's a, that's a little different. And the, you know, where the planning department is reviewing um, it's sort of a different, a little different detail, you know, to catch some of that stuff.
Thank you.
I mean, the bigger setback, the less chances I was gonna make a mistake and build across the lot line.
Okay. The only question that I'm thinking about is the variance process for parking. So it would change it from a fee and lieu to a variance or there.
No, 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 you would just, it'd still be the fee and lieu, you'd still be requesting it, but the process would be, here's the notification, here's the application. The application um, would, would not require um, like a full-blown out engineering study, just like it's kind of site plan and we can be specific within that. Um, and then it's a public hearing before the board adjusts. It requires public notice.
It requires public notice, that's, it leads to all the transparency, so totally on board.
Okay, good. Um, Devin, anything? Okay, okay, um, any other questions from the trustees? Okay, then I'd like to open this for public comment. Um, y'all have any comments out there?
I don't think so, though.
Okay, uh, if you do, feel free to speak up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and then, uh, Brian, is there anybody online?
There is not.
Okay. Uh, in that case, I'll close public comment. And uh, trustees, you're free to ask more questions. Um, deliberate, choose what you want to do. Um, prove this the way it is, not quite the way it is, but with F four in it. Um, and um, or, Brian, table it. What's your pleasure?
I move that we adopt ordinance eight with the amendment of including over apps. For Marika's suggestion.
Okay.
Marika, sorry.
I second.
Okay, so we have Rice and Swisher. Do you get the motion? Okay, Ed?
Okay.
Um, okay, is there any further comment? Um, let's go ahead and vote. Uh, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Good work, y'all, it's a lot of work. Um, okay, the next item has to do with the CHA housing authority, I G A, or intergovernmental agreement. There's an amendment to it. And um, Brian, do you want to talk about this one?
I can, yeah. Uh, so um, Chaff County, uh, C H A, uh, intergovernmental agreement originally established in twenty twenty. We went through a decently robust amendment uh, late last year. Uh, changing kind of a structure associated with the alternate members, um, and a couple other uh, small, small amendments um, from the county. Um, they have requested that the member jurisdictions, Salida and B V, consider a minor uh, amendment or really one amendment um, to the first amended to create a second amended. And really it comes down to the uh, duties of the board, um, as far as the C H A board. Uh, you can see them listed one through six, but specifically in number six, employees supervise, manage, and direct what was agents and employees, uh, meaning any and all employees, the board would have oversight on and changing that to the authority's executive director. Um, rewind, four or five years ago, there was one employee which was the executive director. Uh, fast forward to now, they've got four to five employees. And I think um, just kind of establishing that for some board members and current um, interactions is really establishes that kind of communication channel that their job is to protect the E D. And the E D directs individual staff. Um, the county has approved it in this um, capacity. Salida did um, discuss it. They did not approve it, they tabled it essentially, in other words, and um, they requested that come back in a different form. They got kind of hung up in the idea that they're on board of establishing the, the board's responsibilities to um, manage and direct executive director. But what happens when a director, when there is no director? And so Salida, one of the council uh, members suggested pretty lengthy language and it kind of, I think, confused the conversation at the end of the day. Um, there's two different ways to look at it. The authority's executive director or interim executive director as appointed. Another argument is that an interim director essentially is the executive director, they're one and the same, they take over the roles and responsibilities. So there's not a need for that additional language. Um, I think, having watched the uh, Salida city council meeting and discussed it with the county, the idea of keeping the establishing as clean as possible, it's probably worthwhile. Um, so if you were to just adopt the authority's executive director, um, just that amendment as is, C H A board could then come back around and uh, establish what it looks like within their bylaws to say, in, in the absence of an executive director, the, you know, whether it's the board chair is acting, executive director until an interim is appointed, um, they can take care of that kind of within their internal documents.
Could we just add acting, uh, acting executive director into this? And then that way it'll match their bylaws?
The bylaws will need to be changed anyways. Um, and I think it's, you know, one of those things of, in a document that's approved over multiple jurisdictions, the county at this time is only one that's approved. But if we make a slight amendment, they need to technically come back and approve it. And then if Salida sees it and changes it, then we both have to come back and approve it. So um, I think the bylaws could match what is the final product.
Yeah, it seems like a lot, a lot of angst over a pretty minor issue.
Yeah, but as it goes around, it's just what Brian was describing, it becomes like a dog and a cat chasing each other around.
Yeah, it seems like this is pretty reasonable revision, but your decision.
Would anyone like to make a motion in regard to this?
I'm the number, but I'll make that motion to approve it.
That's number fifty.
I'll second.
Yeah, it's resolution number fifty.
Thank you.
Series twenty twenty-five, thank you. So that's Swisher and Sturm. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion passes, thank you. Um, now we get into the really interesting, fun stuff with um, Philip and Brian. Um, this is, you know, I'm sure this has been swirling around in your head for a long time. Now we get to dig in and see what's in there. It's great, it's good stuff.
Well, thank you, everybody, good evening. Um, yeah, so the next two agenda items I'll be covering. And they, they uh, they relate to each other. So the first, the first discussion will be taking a look at our general fund emergency reserve policy. Um, specifically the amount, um, so that for the next agenda item, we can adopt the appropriate policy language um, related to that, um, specifically the reserves. So on page one fourteen of your packet is my memo. Um, and with this, uh, I guess I'll, I'll start with what I would ask for the board to come away with this. Uh, is, is that we want you to come up with a reserve amount for the general fund that you're comfortable with, that you feel like is appropriate, uh, given the factors that are presented tonight, other factors that might be on your minds. Um, but this is a board policy, so it's important that you all uh, agree um, and and pick, pick an amount uh, that is, that feels appropriate. With that is, we want you to utilize your unrestricted fund balance uh, appropriately. And what by, what I mean by that is, we don't want you to utilize your unrestricted fund balance as padding for your emergency reserve. So pick your emergen- emergency reserve to serve that function and then use your unrestricted reserve towards uh, actually utilizing, utilizing it for capital, projects, maintenance, that type of thing. Um, so right now, there might be a sentiment that, hey, we're gonna build up an additional reserve because we're not quite comfortable with that emergency reserve. So we want to move away from that so that you know, hey, going into the budget season coming up, you have this much an unrestricted fund balance, that can be used, doesn't have to, um, but it can be, yes.
So two things, one, you're advising us to have two reserves, one is reserved for emergencies, one is reserved for opportunity.
Yes, and you, and there's no, and and I, and I want a shy way of of stating, hey, unless the board wants to. Uh, the unrestricted should be uh, identified to use for a purpose or an opportunity. You don't really want it to grow indefinitely with no purpose, because then the community could come back like, well, hey, we're not a bank. What are we doing here, building this up? We should be utilizing those tax monies towards community benefit.
Okay.
So we want to separate those two so that correct that there's two purposes for this. Uh, so take a look at the memo. Uh, right now, we have a emergency reserve amount of uh, twenty-seven percent of operating expenditures each. Right now, we have a emergency reserve amount of twenty-seven percent of operating expenditures each, each year. Uh, that's in addition to the three percent taper reserve that's required by the state of Colorado. And that, we've been running with that since, boy, twenty fifteen or so. Uh, the board established that policy back then. So we've been running with that since that time. Uh, you can kind of see that in twenty twenty-five numbers. The twenty-seven percent reserve is almost one point nine million dollars that is held specific to that, for that purpose. Uh, unrestricted fund balances is growing. You'll see in our budget this year, we project by the end of the year for that to be around two and a half million. Okay. So looking at industry standards, other municipalities, you can see there's, there's a range of emergency reserves, uh, as little as two months, up to three months, some four months. Poncha, one of our neighbors, Poncha's currently at four months, equivalent of four months, including their taper reserve. Gunnison's at, at four months. Brian had a great idea. So I dug in with doing a little case study, looking at the US fifty closure that, that was experienced last year that impacted Gunnison and Montrose. You can see there that Gunnison definitely identified a negative impact to their sales tax revenues for that multi-month outage, or not complete outage, but definitely impacted their, their businesses and their, and their tax revenue. Montrose, interestingly, didn't say they noticed a whole lot. So that was fascinating. The next section is looking at, okay, well, what does a few different scenarios look like? So the rows of that table are, I picked a one-month reserve, our current reserve at twenty-seven percent, which is, which is equivalent to three point two four months, a five-month, a six-month, and a twelve-month. So the first two columns is what that looks like in terms of time and months. The second column, the reserve percentage, that's, that's in terms of percentage. Um, and then the next two columns are, would be what that reserve amount would be equivalent to in our twenty twenty-five budget. And then what would be the resulting unrestricted fund balance based on what that reserve amount is? So, for example, looking at our current, again, a twenty-seven percent reserve, that's one point eight nine million emergency reserve and a two and a half million unrestricted. So if that were to increase, that would reduce our unrestricted fund balance. Does everybody follow that? Good. Okay. The next table is looking at, okay, well, what are some different scenarios that we could face in terms of our revenue decline? So a moderate five percent ongoing reduction to our sales taxes, a significant ten percent, severe twenty-five percent, or an extreme fifty percent. And then, um, the columns are those different scenarios, reserve scenarios. So how long would we last with just a one-month reserve, emergency reserve, if we wanted to supplement that loss in revenue and not reduce any of our operations? Right? Versus current five months, six months, twelve months. So you can see, once you start getting into the five, six-month range, we can go a pretty long ways without making any drastic changes to our operating. More than likely, we would start to dial things back, right? But this just kind of gives you a feel for how long would those reserves last? In that sense, so. Uh, staff, we are kind of looking at, hey, we were, were unique, correct? So we don't want to base it solely on other municipalities or what, you know, the state says, or, you know, anything like that. What, what's appropriate for here? So we looked at our semi-isolated nature. So we, there's only a few ways in and out of here. So if there is a major impact to transportation, that could have a pretty, uh, big impact on our, on our businesses, fires, floods, all those types of things. Uh, it might take a while for us to recover from some, some larger events like that. So we are saying, hey, let's, let's look at a five-month or forty-two percent emergency reserve. Yeah, if the board is comfortable with that, that's a, that's a pretty conservative, nice padding protection for our community. And that should free up our remaining unrestricted fund balance to start putting that towards capital projects. So that's the, the recommendation again is the, is moving from the twenty-seven percent, three, a little over three months, up to forty-two percent, five-month emergency reserve. That's what's drafted in the policies that we'll look at next. Love the board to have discussion about that, ask questions. If it's a different number, that's great. We can, we can easily amend the next set of policies to match whatever the decision is. I'll pause there.
First thing I did was look at a highway map. I think we're a little more fortunate than Gunnison. Thank goodness. There's a lot of different routes from the Front Range up into BV. But I still appreciate this. I, I've been involved in the recovery of every major fire in this state since twenty-ten. And what I have seen is that regardless of the status of the fire, once the word gets out that there is a fire, people stop coming. Even if the fire's out, even if it's, you know, in Lake County versus Chaffey County. Uh, so that's something that really concerns me. And for that reason, uh, and others, I really like this proposal.
So, Phil, is this really just an accounting exercise where our fund, the, the first page of this is the fund ba- our, our total fund balance is roughly five million? So if we, we change the policy, it's just you basically allocate of all our money, more of us locked up.
Correct.
Okay.
And now, and on all of our reporting budget documents, it reflects that.
Yeah.
So that it's clear at any time this is reserved, it's not available for operating or one-time expenses.
There is, I think it's a good, I think it's a good suggestion. And there's another scenario that has come to mind, you know, Rich is here saying, you know, when there is a disaster, one of the things you saw out is who's going to pay for it. That's typically not a fastly untangled knot. Like, there may be some federal or state funding that'll be here in a week or a month, or, you know, will apply to be reimbursed, or blah, 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 you know? So that, that spigot to turn on to help pay for a disaster is not fast. But if there are people who show up here overnight to help our community, we can use this fund balance. Listen, we'll pay you what we can, and we'll worry about getting ourselves reimbursed. You showed up. I don't want you, I don't want to tell you who risked your life to come help. We'll, we'll pay you in about six months when we get reimbursed. So we would have the flexibility to use this emergency reserve.
Emergency reserve. To offset immediate cost and emergency, knowing that, hey, we're going to take on some risk, and we'll burn dog and reimburse.
The board certainly can do that, definitely.
I think that scenario to me feels probably a bit more likely than, you know, a fifty percent reduction in sales tax revenue that persists.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be a very odd.
Yeah.
Scenario.
Thank you for the work.
Is this money, is it in the water fund, or is it?
It's all general.
Okay.
So we hold it liquid between our, our checking account and our colo trust, which is also liquid, higher interest rate, but still liquid. So we hold it.
Okay, great. So we don't have to worry about crossing funds?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, strictly general fund. We'll get to our enterprise funds when we start looking at the policies.
Okay. Yeah, I'm really happy to see this.
He's found any other municipalities at this level of reserve? Because your examples only showed around three to four months.
Yeah, no, I did not.
I think to Rich's point, we are, we are uniquely at risk at a couple of different hazards that many other towns don't have the combination of fire and flood. Because Happy World Creek comes right down here. And it has been everywhere across the town limits of Univista at one point in geological time or another. I know my yard, just two-tenths of an acre, has rocks this size on one side, and there's topsoil on the other, you know? That's an alluvial deposit that happened. So I think having a pretty robust reserve amount seems pretty prudent, given our unique situation here.
Anybody else? Comments?
I like the, I like the five kind of reserve. And that it could last many, many months. But I would hope that if it was a continued thing that where we needed it, that we would definitely be cutting expenses to go along with it and not come to the end of it. But yeah, very prudent, very good.
So right now, our unrestricted fund bal- balance, he says, is around two hundred fifty, it's two point five million?
Correct.
So that would up it to two point nine million. So would, would that mean in the next budget cycle, we would take a lot out of that for that?
Right. So when I present to you the first look at the budget, I would shift and, and show the reserve amount at the forty-two percent and then show you, okay, here's what you have in unrestricted, unrestricted fund balance that could be used for capital projects for one-time expenditure. So looking at twenty twenty-five numbers, that would be roughly one and a half million.
Okay. So is the plan to up it over time or up it like this year?
It would be immediately.
Okay, and that would.
Or if the board says, hey, we want to push this off to twenty twenty-six. I mean, you, you all can get that direction as well. But the idea would be to effective with, with the resolution.
Okay.
Right now, but we don't have a plan for the unrestricted reserve at this rate. And so here's just a pot of money. We're just saying, hey, get the magic marker out and cover this a little more untouchable.
That's right.
When was the last time we had to use, or have we ever had to use, a reserve fund?
We have never dipped into that because we've always had some level of unrestricted. When COVID started, we put together two alternative budgets that looked at pulling from that into reducing expenditures pretty quickly if sales tax dropped. Fortunately, we didn't have to do that. The board's been great over the years about identifying projects for unrestricted, but never dipping into emergency reserve for non-emergencies. And we haven't had to touch it that I can remember.
No, in fact, I was going to say in like late two thousand, well, at least late two thousands and early twenty-tens, we had a six-month reserve. And during that great recession, um, we didn't even have to pull, we did a zero-based budgeting, but we didn't have to draw from that.
So this is, we've had a much more conservative reserve. It sounds like we were at six months at one point.
Yeah. Yeah, and the community was a little. We had a little bit of community input about that, which is why we ended up at twenty-seven percent.
I think part of it is, there's the reserve amount, but it's a little counter to, don't, you know, increase the amount that you want to be a little bit more untouchable, but have a little more confidence touching the unrestricted. I think that's part of it is, yeah, we're at twenty-seven percent. Now we're talking about increasing it, but at twenty-seven percent over the years, two point five has stacked up. And a little bit of like, maybe that feeling of, well, that's for a rainy day. And it's like, no, we have a rainy day fund specific. So don't be hesitant. If there is something that is identified as a priority, that's what unrestricted is for. And so we want to see and incentivize a little bit more, you know, willingness to dip into that.
Makes sense.
I think I'm getting.
Good, yeah.
Good feedback there.
So you want a motion on that?
I don't think we need a motion on that one. It's going to be integrated into the, uh, next set of resolutions.
Okay, good. Yeah, I think we're all pretty much in agreement there.
Thank you all for that. So moving on to the policies, so on page one sixteen is, is my memo. So we are looking to, um, adopt three policy documents. The first one being the overarching finance policies. Uh, it's, um, it, it's, it's kind of replacing what it is, replacing what we currently have. I think I mentioned it in a work session we had. We have a twelve-page, you know, single-space kind of document that we use for our finance policies. It's very hard to read, uh, includes too much detail in some areas, doesn't touch on some topics that I think are, are relevant, like an investment policy, uh, or saying we need an investment policy. So this is meant to be, um, overarching for the finance organization. The second is an investment policy. So again, just not getting into the nitty-gritty, how, how many bonds we're going to have versus, you know, treasuries and blah, blah, blah. But it's, uh, meant to be the guardrails that comply with laws and regulations and things like that. So if you see your treasurer, uh, day trading or investing in Bitcoin, you can be like, that, that doesn't quite feel right. You have a document to actually refer back to. And then the final one is, is the financial reserve policy, which addresses what we just talked about for general fund, but also for our enterprise funds as well. So kind of lay those three things out in the memo. Now, there's lots of resources that we had to look, uh, look at for this. There's the governmental, governmental accounting standards board, the GASB, government finance officers association, our statutory, statutory requirements. So this one, um, yeah, lots of sources of input for. Um, so the way I've put this in the, the packet is you'll see the proposed policy document, followed by a resolution. So if you're fine with it, we can go one by one. Um, so the first one on page one eighteen is the, the finance policies. So again, this, this addresses, I would say, the, the ten main components, uh, guidelines, uh, that your treasurer, treasurer department handles, our financial reporting, budgeting, revenue management, expenditure control, capital asset management, debt management, which is, which is one that we haven't talked a whole lot about recently because we don't do it a lot, but it's important to kind of lay out what we look at and how we, how we handle debt, when we need to do that. Uh, fund balance and reserves, investments, internal controls, and financial transparency. So again, this isn't meant to be like a job description or anything like that. It's just the higher level guidelines for, for our department. So any questions about that or the, any of the specifics that are in there?
Nope, looks like you can go ahead.
Okay, so resolution fifty-one, um, is on page one twenty-one that relates to that policy.
You want to go motion by motion?
Let's do that.
I would make a motion that we, uh, pass resolution number fifty-one.
Seven. So we have Pike and Rowe, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hey, that motion passes.
Great. Uh, page one twenty-three is our proposed investment policy. So this is something brand new for us. We don't really have anything in writing that outlines how we invest and where we put our monies. So, um, kind of outlines what our objectives are. Obviously, our first and foremost objective is safety. We want to be a safeguard of our, of our money. Liquidity being the second. So we want to analyze how liquid are we? Are we, do we, are we prepared to use our emergency reserves, for example? And, uh, and then through the third being yield. We, we do want to, um, get some return on our monies as best we can, uh, without taking too much risk. Uh, scope, this applies to all of our funds. Investment guidelines, uh, this is a good one because we are pretty limited, right? We can't just go invest in stocks and various things like that. So we, it's a semi-boring, but it is, but it's good, especially recently with higher interest rates. So treasuries. it's a semi boring, but it is, but it's good, especially recently with higher interest rates. So treasuries um, bonds, CDs, colo trust is a good example. That's been a good uh, source of higher interest liquid uh, investment, uh, things like that. We also want to diversify, again, looking at each year, looking at our budget, how much do we need to be liquid uh, versus uh, longer term. We do have some uh, limits uh, by state statute or by uh, our our state guidelines. Um, uh, no investment shall exceed a maturity of five years. So another thing for you all to be aware of, if you ever saw, okay, we have a fifty year bond, like, don't speak up, that's not allowed. Um, safekeeping in custody. So just talking about how we work with third parties. And then again, like all of these policies that we just write in there that the town treasurer or town administrator will will review these and then bring any uh, proposed amendments to the board when necessary. So uh, resolution number fifty two is on page one twenty six.
I'll move resolution number fifty two.
Second.
Let's start with Rice. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, good.
Moving along. All right, page one twenty eight is the financial reserve policy.
I don't think you're using the amended packet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, I'm on my turn now. I'm sorry. You did this to me. I was doing so well and so are you well following along good enough? Just had about twenty pages.
One forty five.
One forty five. Thank you. Um, okay, so again, financial reserve, what's what's the purpose? What's the scope? Um, so looking at reserve levels, so general fund, we just talked about. Uh, we're changing that to uh, five months or forty two percent of our annual operating expenditures. Our table reserve will remain at the three percent. Enterprise funds, number three, that's new as well. So right now, we have nothing policy wise that says, here's what our appropriate reserve is for airport and water funds. We need to have something in writing for that, right? So um, we are proposing to go with a three month uh, of operating expenses for that. Um, that could be, that could be less, that could be more. That seems to be pretty industry standard for for enterprise funds. Uh, we we typically see water fund grows over time. Uh, it's a little easier to control because we can directly impact the revenue when needed. Airport's a little harder. We'll talk about that at the next meeting, once this is adopted. Um, but again, we feel like the three months uh, provides an adequate buffer uh, for those two funds. So open the discussion on that point.
Quick question on that. So in the event there's something with the, now what are airport issue? And they have to dip into that reserve and it becomes problematic. Can we supplement that reserve from our emergency reserve?
Absolutely.
As a loan, and if you exceed ten percent? You lose enterprise status for a year.
So ten percent of what?
Ten percent of that enterprise's revenue, if it is a loan from local or state.
Grant essentially.
Then you lose enterprise status, you can do some of the benefits of enterprise.
Because you can't go rating it when they got a lot of money we needed. You can't go rating it, but we could make a loan to it.
Always, the board can always transfer money from the general fund, but you do, you do start to look at the enterprise status for the for the upcoming year. Um, but in emergencies, hey, that everything's on the table.
Yeah, but a law, it has to be a grant. A loan doesn't affect the enterprise status. So if it's loan to the enterprise, you're okay. If it's a grant to the enterprise, the ten percent rule applies.
That's right.
If it's a loan or a grant, if it's a loan from the enterprise, that's okay, but there's subtle tweaks involved.
Okay, it needs to be market rate loan. It can't just be a
Year of interest.
Yeah, it needs to be a loan.
So where where I'm getting at with that, that does not need to be nearly as high as Forty two percent. We just need to have something there that would allow some minor perturbations. And then if something big happens, we have some tools to supplement.
Yeah, okay. How we handle our capital improvements. And that one, that one again is is a an extension of our general fund, so we don't typically want to carry significant fund balances in the capital fund. That's that's meant to be put money in, use the money for but we do have carryovers from year to year. So do want to address that unrestricted fund balance. Uh, and then the use of reserve. So this this provides the the board some language around, okay, when do we want to use these things, conditions for use? Um, reserve replenishment. So if we dip into any of these reserves, are we trying to replenish? How how do we approach that? Uh, monitoring and recording, uh, those types of things. So the board has authority to change reserve policies, change reserve amounts. You really can dip into your uh, reserve for things that you determine are appropriate. Um, but this gives some guidance uh, for those for those events. So any questions about that language?
Move, we adopt resolution fifty three.
One second. Rice and Pike, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes.
Thank you. Our auditor will appreciate this, our grant agent sees a little like our shiny policies, it's good.
Yeah, excellent. Okay, now we go bounce back to Brian
Yep.
To talk about our core services policy.
On page one fifty. Yeah, sticking with policy, so uh, core service policy, um, kind of a brief explanation and background on it. Um, really, at the end of the day, um, the goal, and we've been talking about this, um, pretty much since the beginning of the year, um, we've had discussions at the department head level, and then we also introduced it at the uh, board of trustees planning session. Um, the goal is to identify those core services. What are those um, expectations of um, services that the town is expected to deliver to the residents? Um, that's what we, and by establishing that, that is what we focus and prioritize on providing and fulfilling that before we stray outside of it. And so um, kind of goes along the lines of as we kind of go in to the next year or two, as we've seen revenues kind of flatten off and costs uh, continuing to increase, making sure that we have a focus going into budget season, making sure that we're providing the services within our core services before we stray outside of that. And so um, we had the opportunity to uh, take the initial draft. Uh, put it to the department heads, make sure it reflected what they felt like was their responsibility in the different individual departments. Um, as far as board of trustees get um, some feedback as far as uh, potential changes. You will notice that we um, intentionally did not number or um, just changed those to bullet points. So it does, these are all important and we want to deliver all of these things and it's not set in any uh, priority within the document itself. Um, starting with public safety as far as uh, police and law enforcement. Uh, partnering with other agencies as far as fire protection, emergency management, like we saw tonight. Uh, of course municipal court, then uh, we've got airport that also serves in an emergency capacity and asset aspect. Uh, infrastructure and development in the way of water, uh, streets and roads and sidewalks, bridges, uh, traffic management, street lighting. Um, street lights do come with the bill every month. Uh, maintenance and development as far as the regional airport, uh, this and looked at as a transportation access to the area and economic development. Uh, planning implementation of capital projects, of course, parts of recreation and community services. Um, bullet points there, land use, uh, planning zoning as far as um, continuing to look at our code, making sure it reflects the community vision and uh, that's what we wanted to accomplish. Uh, you got governance and civic engagement, and that's really kind of getting into the financial man- management, ensuring smooth operation, effective service of delivery, uh, transparency, uh, stuff like that. Then reiterating our guiding principles, you'll see, you know, those who are embedded in the call plan, something we talk about uh, annually, if not more, um, and as well as the key outcome areas of what um, we're trying to provide. So where is the, as a town, where do we fit? Where do we um, what is our primary purpose in our lane? You know, we got streets, we got parks, we got planning, we've got um, you know, emergency services, provide water, airport, stuff like that. So um, this, as we get into budget season, is something to focus on. If we're not meeting these goals, we should probably be looking at contributing to other organizations that are requesting funds. So um, that's the purpose behind it. And any questions that you guys might have?
Questions? On page one fifty five, we've got it right there under infrastructure. It's just a quick maintaining, maintain. We'll go back down a little bit.
That's from the Department of Redemption Department.
Yeah.
Maintain and maintain.
Yeah.
Yes.
We just need to maintain. It's one of my favorite songs. The updates look great, Brian. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, it's really nice. Questions? No questions? Make a motion to approve the action of resolution number fifty four.
Second.
So we have Pike and Swisher. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Thank you very much, Brian. And now the employee handbook, again with Brian
Yep.
And John, I imagine?
Yes.
John is deputy treasurer, also known as the
HR manager.
Uh, this is another one that we've been uh, in process pretty much since the beginning of the year, if not uh, earlier uh, or late twenty twenty four. Uh, the employee handbook. This iteration of it originated in twenty sixteen, updated in twenty twenty one. This kind of a four to five year um, need to robust update and a lot of changes as far as twenty twenty one, did it did not entail a lot of changes. Um, so really a bulk of it was from twenty sixteen. Uh, which John has been keeping notes of things that she's identi- identified that have been needing to be changed over the years. Um, just situations that have come up um, over the last year, as well as anticipating uh, challenges that might come in uh, in the future as far as an employee and personnel goes. Um, so I would say, you know, a couple of the main changes as far as employee holiday pay. Um, currently, this kind of got spurred from the police department currently. If a police officer is required to work on a holiday, um, which they do, right? They don't make provide coverage uh, seven days a week. If they're required to work on a holiday, that employee, as it currently stands, banks that those hours to be used at a later date, which is nice with the exception of you know, somebody or employees or somebody that's brand new will all of a sudden have a pretty healthy stack of uh, pay time off time available to take off. And so that tends to happen either, you know, September, October, towards December. And that makes scheduling difficult as they're not trying to just accommodate two weeks of vacation, but at times four to five weeks for each individual officer. So that's for that section, we did reach out to as far as city of Salida, Chaffey County, Park County to um, see what their structure was. What we landed on is pretty, pretty much in line with the three of those. Um, and as you've seen, as far as the police work session, um, that is something that we want to stay competitive with, um, not just wage, but also uh, benefits. So there is that, and there is a slight uh, budgetary impact to that that was actually contemplated going into twenty twenty five. So it has been addressed within this year's budget, but we'll make sure that it's also carried forward into twenty twenty six. Uh, we touched nepotism, we touched uh, dress code. We actually did incorporate and introduce a um, pay time off or PTO sharing program? Um, so, and then follows our uh, IRS standards. Um, it's only used for medical emergencies. We have definition of that, but if um, an employee, if they have, you know, a peer that has a medical emergency and they want to help them and their time of need, they can give some of their time and donate it to them so they can eat it. So um, are there big ones?
Um, we'll be doing, we'll be beginning the uh, motor vehicle records search.
Yep. And that's really robust for CDO holders and those employees that are um, required to drive quite often, right? Um, beyond that, um, like I said, with how many changes there were, we didn't list all individually in the resolution, because it would have been probably uh, ten to fifteen pages.
Um, Brian, I would just also add that Jeff's team, Catherine specifically, spent quite a bit of time making sure that all the things we came up with comply with the law as well. So people had a good bit of input.
They did, yep. And uh, at, you know, as far as Philip, John and I probably met four or five times for multiple hours over the time period. So feel good about it. Um, clarification as far as internal and external postings. Um, that's another big one as far as the hiring process and flexibility there. Beyond that, unless there's any uh, questions we'd look to uh, for to consider, um, resolution number fifty five.
I have a couple comments.
Yep.
I'm working off of the old packet. On page one sixty four, um, three, two, one, three. Um, there's something in there that um, time off for death or impending death of a parent or a child. Shouldn't that include your spouse?
Yeah, one eighty, one eighty two.
Oh, I got one eighty two.
Oh, one eighty one. One eighty one is the third bullet in the bottom.
Yeah. Did you find it?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, does seem like it.
Oh, it should include your spouse or depending on how it goes, your significant other, your partner, your
Page one eighty one, third bullet from the bottom.
Yeah, yeah, just make sure I got that heading right.
Oh, okay.
Immediate family, since the immediate family includes a spouse?
Yes. And then one other item. It was on page one seventy eight, so it's going to be a little after the other, and it was five point one, and it's, I can understand by posting just internally for a job position. And I can understand how sometimes you would want to do that, but you potentially could be missing out on another great employee by just posting internally.
I know, five point.
One ninety five, page one ninety five.
Um, yeah, I mean, I will say there's been a couple of situations that this has come up and
But if you have that in there, it gives you the right to do it.
That's right. And so That's right. And so the idea behind it is give as much flexibility as possible. And so I think you have some departments where, you know, say, you know, public works has pretty robust, you've got director, kind of supervisor, and then three or four tiers, right? And so you might lose a guy and you already automatically know, like, he can slide right in. And so being able to be nimble and move him right in and then immediately start the process on backfilling, that's the big thing we wanted there is to have the flexibility. That if we have internal, we can act quickly and then backfill as needed.
Good advice. And that would be helpful with some future hindsight. If you were to say, okay, we've made the decision to post this internally and here's why memo to file. Where it's not urban legend of why you agreed to post internally. Some sort of uh documentation, because I mean, I, but there are times that makes very good sense.
Right.
But who will remember that? On and the question comes up and someone goes, oh, this is what posted internally. Just your discretion to be recalled.
Yeah, I'd be curious as far as where would it live? I mean, would you put that memo within that person's person, the person that was hired into that position's personnel file? Or does it really live there? I'm just wondering as far as tracking going forward. I see what you're saying. You're putting a memo together to memorialize why the decision was made. Just wondering where you put that, where it's easily accessible.
Just, just a thought.
Yeah. I think it's pretty, it's pretty standard government. All levels of government have language like that.
Yeah, and I mean, there's no, each situation is, I think we've run across even in the, you know, last six months where there's one situation where you've got a candidate that is, yeah, like eighty percent there. And do you interview and say no and then go external just to find out all we, all the other fish were seventy percent and we just missed our chance on that one?
Yeah.
Um, or do you say eighty percent, we're going to go external and include them in the application or in the pool of applicants? And so there's that opportunity, but I do think there are some situations probably within a department that an opening comes up and you say, yep, slide right in.
Other comments, questions?
We have been trying to implement or have been working on implementing um succession planning within each department, so that.
That's great. I'm glad.
So that would, with doing the succession planning within each department, you're kind of grooming one of those employees to take over as another higher up position becomes available.
A career path line, that's nice.
That institutional continuity serves the entire town very well.
Mm-hmm. Well, because of the amount of institutional knowledge that they already have, you know, to be able to promote them from within versus pulling someone from outside who doesn't have any knowledge, I think is is huge.
Does anybody want to make a motion about?
I'll make the motion that we approve the adoption with the amendment on page one eighty-one to add date it to immediate family members, uh of resolution number fifty-five, series twenty twenty-five.
So we have hike and Swisher. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Great, getting a lot of stuff done here. Obviously wise. Um, item G has to do with a resolution uh that we've created internally here. Um, for um, it's a resolution of the Board of Trustees for the town of Buena Vista, supporting public land. And um, I support this and I hope that we can pass it. Um, it doesn't necessarily have a, you know, a, an effect today, but, but at least it makes a statement as to what we believe in here. So does anyone have any comments or um questions about it?
Thank you for putting it and getting it out there, having it on record.
Yeah, because eighty percent of our county is public land, I think. We vastly changed it before you lost it.
I move resolution fifty-six.
Second.
Okay, so we have Sturm and Row, uh all in favor?
Can we have some discussion?
Oh, sure, of course.
Yeah. Public lands in public hands is something I firmly agree with. I question whether this is the right role for local government. I also question the shelf life. This is kind of passed. There was broad bipartisan support to not have this included. I would be in favor of this resolution if we would at least say Buena Vista is, we are, uh, we advocate for more bipartisan consensus at a federal level. Because this is speaking to something that's already passed, it's not an issue. There was bipartisan support in favor of what this proclamation says. I can't support this proclamation.
I guess I'm confused. You say it's talking about something that is already passed, that this is, situation is no longer imminent. However, nobody saw it was imminent six months ago. We don't know what will happen tomorrow and I guess I don't see the harm in saying we stand behind our public lands.
I'd just like to, and I would like to acknowledge there was some, we brought bipartisan support for this to have it not included in this last dumpster fire.
Well, I, I don't know why we have to tie it to federal legislation. I think it's just a statement from this Board of Trustees that can exist outside of that. That's, that's how I read it.
That's kind of how I write it too, is.
And that's, no, and, and that's fine. I'm saying the, the issue I agree with. I just, I can question whether it's the role of local government to do this, so that's fine. Just want to, just want to explain my.
I think it's a role of everybody who has an opinion on it to state it. But you've done so.
Yeah, I just, I'm just, I'm just, I just want to give some context to my, my vote in opposition, but that's where I'm coming from.
Okay. Any other comments for their discussion?
Or one more in jest, if we include that we recommend the federal government adopt policies like Philip proposed. Now we're straying way outside the line. The balanced budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Being fiscally responsible. I retract that joke.
Okay. Um, any further, further comments? Okay, um, all in favor of our making this resolution?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Thank you for sharing your opinion. Okay, the motion is adopted or the resolution is adopted. Um, now we have trustee staff interaction. One big one. Big one is, um, you know, there, it's planned that there will be a grocery store but into uh Buena Vista. And, and, and that Kroger will close its current location and then move up to the other location after it's designed and built. And we have the right as the Board of Trustees to request that we um call that up to ourselves here, have the public hearings in front of ourselves and we make the decisions about it. And I think we're not really very qualified to make those decisions as compared to our P and Z um Planning and Zoning um Commission, you know, who, who's used to doing these, these things. So um, you know, just in talking with Brian about it and thinking about it, it just seems like, to me, it seems like it would be hazardous for us to um decide to be the decision makers on, on a great big development like this. I mean, this is probably the biggest thing that's come to Buena Vista in its whole history. So um, I don't know that we have to make it tonight, but um, you know, I, I was thinking that, wow, it'd be great to pull this up and we could, you know, we can all have our say in it, but, but really it feels like we could get bogged down in it.
I feel like it's a process that that's what they're there for. That's why that commission exists, is to be those subject matter experts. And there's nothing stopping us from going to those meetings and being present for public and public comment. Right, like, I.
So then we could go to the P and Z meetings, is that right?
Is that, let, I'm looking at you.
Yeah, that's a question. Because I've done, I've done that on occasion where like, I'm just curious. I'd like to be informed and I go sit and listen, but there's some, there are some times when it's not appropriate.
Right, well, I guess I'm not familiar with exactly what type of application they need to file to get reviewed in front of us.
Major site.
And that goes only to the planning commission and then this. And then what if somebody wants to appeal the decision of the planning zoning commission?
Then it would go to the trustees.
Then you're still potentially going to be hearing it as an appeal. So I recommend that you, you don't get outside information on it.
So we get to, we, we preserve our ability to sit in judgment on an appeal.
Right.
By not being informed.
Right, right, yeah. Yeah, because if, yeah.
That also.
That's the other option if, you know, if they don't like what the planning and zoning rules, they could appeal it and then it could come to us.
But if we're all there, then they can't appeal it because we'd all have to recuse ourselves.
So that, it, it creates that, that conflict of trustees being elected to represent the voice of the community. And then this major site plan comes up and all of a sudden we can't be present at those meetings because we have to remain, which is understandable. So it's how do we approach that and the best way to let those subject matter experts do their job while still maintaining the voice of the community within those persons?
Well, the community has a right to participate in those hearings and say, need to say, you're basically going to be functioning in a quasi judicial role.
Right.
So like you typically, I always sort of say, you know, imagine that your, you know, judges, the appellate court judges don't go to the trial court, listen to the trial. Maybe even provide comment, go outside the trial. They, they basically review it neutrally, having preserved their neutrality and their independence from the trial court. So that's just part of the process of being in a local government. You basically speak for the citizens of legislative matters, you speak for my administrative matters, but when it comes to the quasi judicial matters, like land use issues, you have to put on a different hat.
And so we, we, we have to be the most uninformed residents, just in case.
Well, I mean, you don't have, you're certainly allowed to read the news, you're certainly allowed to understand what's going on. You can't, you don't, you don't have to hide in a hole, but you're not supposed to be participating or taking ex-party information from a developer, soliciting information from citizens, or if they come to you, they want to talk to you, you say, hey, I'm, I may, there's a chance I could be hearing this. Go to the meeting, express your opinion at the planning and zoning commission meeting during the public hearing process, because I may be sitting here listening to this later as a judge.
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a tricky situation when you have two different hats to wear and some things are legislative, some things aren't, it might come to you, it might not. You know, and, and just the fact that you actually know information or that you've heard things, that, that's not disqualifying. It's really, you know, has to go to a different level.
But if we, if we attended those P and Z meetings and then it was a, if I attended those meetings just as a member of the audience and then it was appealed, I would need to recuse myself from this board's decision.
Yeah, it's not, it's not cut and dry, but we really recommend you don't do that because it looks like you're, you're inserting yourself and you're getting more information than the other board members would get. You're supposed to be making a decision as an appellate body uh on the, on, on the record that comes before you, not on stuff you've actually proactively gone and learned yourself. So it looks like you're proactively out there getting different information, so, yeah. Like, any, any judge would recuse themselves if they sat in the audience of the trial. So I look at it, that's, that's kind of the standard you have to hold yourself to.
So you've just made your trip worthwhile, worthwhile.
Well, I was really feeling like I wasn't getting anything. I could have done that over the video, but it's also good to hear in person.
Yeah.
Super helpful.
Yeah, no, you're welcome. It's tricky. I'm always happy to answer any questions about that.
So we don't have to come up with an answer right now, but it's just something I, I felt like we should be thinking about.
And from your perspective, my BB, so we're revitalizing that and we have a draft project page that will be available to the public soon. All of that information would eventually be presented. But my BB introduces an opportunity for live public comment and feedback. And so I just wonder, from your perspective, is it most appropriate if planning and zoning commission and board of trustees avoid going to my BB to find out information?
Yeah, the same thing, like the planning commission, you're supposed to get their information at the public hearing. It's part of the public hearing record, so, yeah.
So, so if we were to call it up because we're interested, we're basically telling P and Z, P and Z, we got this.
Yep.
It's our, yeah, and I, I agree with.
We can't just call it up for curiosity and then just be like, ah, never mind, you got it.
No, no, you're going to basically would take over their role and you're just deciding in that case.
Yeah, I agree with Maggie. That's, 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 we don't have the.
We're not the subject matter. Right, right.
Yeah.
It makes it a little, makes it a little bit of a balance there.
Yeah, it's, it's tricky when you're, when you're potentially in a appellate body. You, you know, I know you, that your whole role here is to get involved and to get, but that's a different type of matter. Legislative, I go for it.
So hypothetically, if there was a big grocery store coming, we haven't talked about that, but hypothetically, if there was.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Well, I mean, you, you do have to, you know, to, to make a decision about whether to call it up, you have to have some information.
So if you're interested, I mean, I mean, planning department will let you know this is coming.
Do you want to call it up? So you can have a discussion about that, if you wanted to formally consider it. And that's appropriate because that's, that's required by your code.
Because we could call it up at, at, at what points could we call it?
You know, I haven't read the exact language, so I don't want to start off that without knowing it for sure, but I mean, it would be at the time that they probably filed their application. And it's going to go to the planning commission, you would have an opportunity.
To say, wait, we'd like to at least have a, decide whether to call it up or not. I, I, that's how I assume it would work, so.
And it requires a super majority to do so.
Two thirds.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, another one to think about is um, so um, I think at least three of us decided that we wanted to have a work session on short-term rentals. I'm not sure what we want to accomplish with that. So, so I'd like to get ideas from people and, you know, as to what, you know, what are we after here? And what can the staff put together for us? So let's not leave it till the last minute. It's in two weeks.
Yeah.
Right?
So do you want me to comment on it now?
Sure, now would be fine.
Okay. The only thing that I'm really interested in, I'm with Devin, we did a lot of work on that and did, um, I think once you give something out that you, it is very hard to take it back. But I would like to freeze the increase numbers. Um, that we, so let's say right now we have two hundred and fifty. I have no idea how many we have. But every year, depending on the amount that's built, and we have felt a lot um to try and have housing. I would like to freeze our cap amount and not increase it every year until we have more stable housing situations, and that's the only thing I'm interested in.
Change in, yeah. So you would, you would cause the percentage just to go down?
Right. We wouldn't be taking anything away from anybody that's already been given. We just wouldn't increase the number every year.
Okay.
Until housing has caught up a little bit. Yeah, and that's the only thing that I'm interested in changing, because I know we did a lot of work on it, Devin.
Yeah, yeah, it was a lot of work and, you know, I'd be interested to know what information we have given since we've put that policy into place. I think that would be huge, just to know, you know, how many short-term rentals have we had? How much backlog or how many people are trying?
Yeah.
That kind of thing, you know, how long are people waiting if they are in county versus out of county? Um, just to have, you know, people are only waiting a month and then they're getting their short-term rental. I feel like it's not really. Doing what we're setting out for and, you know, with the. The uptick of housing that we're going to be bringing online, it's gonna cause. A lot more short term rentals to come online. Which I I agree with you Cindy, but yeah, I don't, I'm not in favor of. Changing it drastically, for sure.
I I would like to better understand the new housing. That has been added since this policy was last revised or put into place. And what we have projected to come online in the next twelve calendar months. And because I do think that this is a policy that we need to visit on a semi regular basis. Uh, as we're seeing our inventory jump so drastically. I think it's really a crucial time to look at it and potentially look at a modeling method that is not based on percentages. Um, but based on current data of what we've seen and what works. Uh, I think the other big thing to look at is. How to incentivize short term rental owners. Into long term rental owners. And if there is a way within the STR policy to incentivize that. So we have more stock for our long term housing. Andrew's brought it up before, our current. Lack, our current housing needs assessment is pretty much on par with what is short term rental in our area right now. There's a little bit of a difference. So kind of better understanding how we could incentivize short term. Into long term. Because right now I I didn't find a place in the policy that really jumps out. And then better understanding our current inventory and what we're looking at in the next few years. And if we should stay on a percentage model or if we should look at potentially. Limiting. I'm worried if we stay on a percentage model, we'll see entire neighborhoods turn into short term rental neighborhoods. And then we'll lose our community feel. And that's right up at the top of the list of priorities for the comp plan and everything we've been talking about. So that's definitely something I'd like to explore. I know it's a difficult conversation to try to figure out how to. Limit short term rental areas or short term rentals in certain areas, but. Having some kind of a conversation around that. So that's what I'd like to spend it.
But I know I'll further complicate this for you.
At the end of the day, we still have.
I think the structure intended is a work, work session, so no decisions there. And a draft changes in policies for future meetings, but.
Yeah, I'm just, as we're talking about all of this, I. I feel like my research is is pointing towards we're like on the edge of the housing market. Going in a direction that it has not gone in in a long time in the state, so. I just wanna keep that context in mind as we have this conversation. Any insights we can get on that would be really helpful.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, any insights on other municipalities? I remember when we first tracked the the short term rental policy, we looked at. Tarango and Salida, um, you know, and. Any other information we can get on on their policies and anything that. Similar municipalities have done that. Has worked or not worked or have they seen any kind of change or is it? No, I think that's super helpful too.
When we look at those areas, can we also include the more rural agriculture areas? Like I, cuz we are a split mix of both, right? And so like, that's part of what I want us to kind of keep in mind. But I don't need that data for the work session. Hey, I'm just curious about if we're looking at other areas that we don't include just the summit counties. But if we're gonna, if we're gonna compare to anybody that we keep that abroad comparison, we'll see what works for the rural areas too.
I would like to kind of again echo what Cindy said. I think I, we're not gonna take action in this work session, but I think I would be in favor of freezing. At our current limits to give us time. Cuz all these things we've spelled out, like you've got a full time job in the next two weeks, you can't pull all this together. We need some time. To get some information, let it distill, get some feedback from the public and. It will take some time to reevaluate or to look at our policy, but to freeze, you know, get us to point where, hey, we're gonna freeze. Give us some time to ask these questions and distill some of this information. For the work session though, what I would be curious to see is a comparison of the number of STRs in BV compared with, like Maggie said, the housing needs assessment. How many, how many residences do we need? Number two, is there any way to get occupancy data for STRs or is that all behind a? Magic paywall where you can't get that in a public domain? Cuz that's a key piece of this is the occupancies, the unoccupied. Residential structures don't do anybody any favors. Well, let me rephrase that. They don't do the community at large any favors. But we don't have access to see occupancy rates for the STRs that we've got in town.
You mean how often they rent it out personally? I mean, we could on our own try to get some anecdotal data on that. I know a couple of people that have. Short term rentals and and talk to them about.
Cuz there is an economic benefit from short term.
Of course.
Occupants. There's not an economic benefit to having vacant STRs.
Right. I think it's gonna be a lot of seasonality.
Yeah. A lot of this stuff could just should go into our discussion. I don't think we're gonna run it all down in one work session and have. Airtight idea of how we, how or if we should revise the policy, but it's nice to at least get the conversation started.
Do you think we should try to freeze it at the next meeting?
I mean, that would give us space to look at this cuz there. There are multiple, I've heard multiple proposals about how you could make the future better, but in terms of STRs, some of those proposals go toward. Completely unrestraining them and letting a market based approach drive it. To further restrictions. I think there's merits on all sides of that that need to be fleshed out over time.
So maybe something similar to how when we did the water allocation policy, we froze. And the planning department wasn't really there.
The new number isn't calculated until the end of August, and so, um, you have the opportunity to discuss on the twenty second of July. And then any outcome of that, including, hey, change it from this percentage to that number or whatever it is. Can be incorporated into, um, an ordinance for concurrence at the end of August before the new number is released.
This seem like the the work session is an opportunity to make a list of a thousand questions.
True, this is what you're doing now.
You cannot run all this down before the next work.
Freezing, would that be able to be done immediately or would that have to be a thirty day? Thing. That's fine.
You could do an emergency ordinance posing a moratorium, freezing, you know, further issuance of permits.
So we could do that before the end of August when it would be allowed.
The thing is, it ratchets up with the number of COs issued, right? And so they're coming in at a, at a clip. There's a lot that will come online.
Yeah, we'll have nearly two hundred more units within six months. That's a lot.
But it's not a real time increase, right? It's a spot number in that spot in August.
At the end of August.
However, many COs have gone out. If we haven't put a moratorium in place by then. Then September one, our percentages would increase.
Yeah, look at as far as the the timing is when we release or.
There are a couple of weeks in September that are open field and then it closes up for October. October is just renewals. Opens back up afterward.
So we've got the timeline at least. That's helpful. So we have one question answered.
I think you got, anything else? I think you got a little bit.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, what about the splash park?
Well, it sounds like it's open a little bit. Yeah, and that just happened today, so. The comment came in, you know, as far as clothes and why, why is it closed? So it's like, well. Get science out there and identify that. After the last meeting and discussions with Sean, are there opportunities to open it? You know. Tuesday, Thursdays for a period of time or every day for a period of time. He, um. You know, decided maybe every day for a couple hour period, he wanted to get water feedback, never, you know, didn't get the feedback from water. And so this morning was basically, we gotta try something, right? So settled on noon to two, see how that works. Um, you know, I get what he's, uh, Dr. Gibb is saying in the way of. Um, you know, how much water is it really using? I do think it uses a decent amount. But it's also the image that it's portraying, right? Um, that we're asking. Residents across town to. Make sacrifices and then you go to the, every time we drive by the splash pad, it's spring.
Is it odd number or even number address? These are the days it's open. You're abiding by the watering schedule.
Brings up very good points in our history of the park, what the optimist have done.
I think, I think his, his request definitely deserves some consideration and some degree of. Flexibility on our part because it is, it is a community.
Benefit, you know, we're trying to get people to, hey, what are, you know.
Discretionary use of water or gas, but having kids run through a sprinkler, um.
There's a little difference. I think it merits some consideration. Is there, is there a way to make things more efficient in the splash park?
Um, potentially, I would say for now, the idea of, um. You know, it was shut down completely. We, you know. Try this structure out, noon to two, every day, kind of get a feel for that, see where we're at. Um, and then evaluate and give us some consideration, but. First, I wanna show the support to the public works and the water staff. Um, and their recommendations and see kind of how this initial two hour window works. And then we can always reevaluate in a week or two.
Would it be appropriate, maybe we should have this discussion when Dr. Gibb was here, would it be appropriate to reach back out to the optimist and explain, like you tried to say? This summer, we are at a particular pinch point. I think our demand and our, and the issues with the water plant coming online, so on and so forth. Can you propose a modi, what would, what would, if they could be a stakeholder in this, helping us meet our goals, can you propose a modified schedule? A limited schedule and get their input, like we need to limit it. What would you propose?
Yeah, at least have a conversation. We can reach out to him and explain it a bit more.
Pull him in and say, help, help us manage this. We can't just.
Seemed open.
Throw it open.
It seemed open ideas. And then if it had a financial impact, like, you know, when you're at a hot tub, you gotta turn on the bubbles for a certain amount of time. Being able to turn on the splash park so that it's not running all the time.
What hours was it open? When it's fully open, what are the hours?
Anytime you push a button.
Yeah, it's like a timer.
Oh, there is a timer.
I don't know, it's like a minute or two.
It's not very long yet.
Yeah, but it's not intended to be a, a. Forever off, but. All right, see if they participate in proposing a modified schedule.
Yeah, I think just having, yeah, we can have a conversation, reach out to him. I'm, you know, I know well, I know Sean has it explained it and. You know, it's not, it's the perception and it is, it's not a forever thing, right? It is just kind of, we're trying to get through somewhere. We're asking everybody to sacrifice a little bit. Um, we get it, yeah, there's other places, but we're asking them to conserve too.
I really appreciate that you put the QR code on that sign as well, because it helps to explain why it is what it is. Right? So and and where else they can help. So that's. The optics of it in that way are, we're, we're doing it, but we all gotta make sacrifices somewhere this summer.
I would hope by the end of summer that we could extend that to more than a couple hours a day. I don't know if it's the mother in me or not, but I'm worried about the younger kids in town playing in the town lake. Over the splash park. They see older kids do it. They see, you know, I I just think that that's. And I realize that when kids are assertive, that they should be supervised, but that's not always the case. I'm just, it's a concern of mine. And I can understand why it is closed too, but. If if there's any way to increase that time, I would like to see us to be able to do it.
Not putting on my hat that Sean wears in his report. I don't know if you've noticed, but he showed the historical discharge level of cotton. Running right now, so I think that there's. A lot of trend lines are pointing to this pinch point that we need to be careful about.
Well, I'm kind of like Dr. Gibb. I think that the schools should cut back on their water use if they don't.
You're using a lot of water.
Have the optimists close, go talk to the school.
Yeah, maybe. Invite him to the August.
Well, maybe they'll be more optimistic. Well, that's all I have.
Uh, I just wanna give a shout out, beautification, um, our awesome beautification board. They put a new plaque up at town hall, so if you haven't checked it out yet, check it out. Keep an eye. Let's see how it ages. I think it'll age really well. It's gonna be great. Um, big shout out to our law enforcement, public works and rec this weekend seemed really great. And I don't know, nobody has said any other, anything otherwise. So just amazing work and and really grateful for that. So other than that, uh. Then, okay, so since we talked about planning and zoning earlier, I was planning on going to the comp plan approval tomorrow. That's okay though, cuz that's just like.
You mean, the comp plan is by the by the planning commission?
Yeah, tomorrow night, they're doing their approval of it. And then it comes to board of trustees.
Yeah, the recommendation comes to you. And then you basically apply the criteria and.
So I shouldn't go tomorrow or I can't?
Comp plan actually is more legislative in nature, so you you can go.
Okay. I mean, it's a seven o'clock meeting, you could have told me otherwise.
Yeah, I could have saved you. Sorry, you're free to go.
That's all right. That's information support. And and that's it. That's all I got.
Okay, Andrew.
I have a request for Mr. Pocket. When I asked about the emergency transfer between our mercy fund and enterprise fund. And then Jeff, you responded and then Brian, you responded, said, yeah, but you'll lose your enterprise fund status for a year. Can you do enterprise one on one for us when we kick off budget season?
Sure.
Yeah, just just so that quick dynamic is kind of, we're all up to speed on. All the wear and what for is behind that. Yeah.
Yep.
Cuz I think that will tie, I think that ties into some degree where, why don't you just waive some taxes?
Yes.
We can't do that. That's it.
Um, I had someone ask me and Sean isn't here, but maybe you would be able to answer it. I know that we approved for road striping to be done. But this citizen was complaining about Harrison Street by Love, said there. The paint lines have worn off, so unless. You, a a new person that's never been here before wouldn't know what the turn lanes were and. Whatever. And and I didn't know if that was included in this, in the restripping of some of our streets or not.
Doesn't sound like it. So right now, the the restructuring of like, um, rodeo road that. You know, identifies the long line, that's the truck driving down with the signal sprayer, you know. Line to do long lines. We didn't actually get a quote from C dot to freshen up, um, kind of crosswalks and striping. Adjacent to highway intersections. And so it's kind of that like gray area where you got C dot mixed with. Town, it sounds like you're talking about, you know, part of a highway intersection. And responded with, could you give us a clarity on the scope of work and I can check into that.
Okay. I was gonna comment on the traffic, but did that earlier and gave my ideas earlier, so I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Seven.
Uh, the only thing I have is that I did, uh, work at the festival. So it's interesting to see. Uh, from an inside perspective, what was going on and, uh, you know, I didn't take any tickets. I worked like 20 hours or something. But, uh, it was, it was very well-run, the festival overall, you know? I had gripes about the bartending section of it, but that had nothing to do with the overall festival and, uh, you know, other than the traffic issue. I felt like everything was pretty well-run and people had a, a very good time and, uh, it was a cool event. Uh, you know, there was. You know, I think it was, I, I go to a lot of festivals. Last year I went to four festivals of all different sizes. So. Um, I've seen a lot of them and I thought it was great. So I think it's a. A cool event. I'm excited for the next one to see how that goes. And, uh, you know, I think they need more porta potties, but that's kind of a lot of festivals. I think it was.
You're our inside man.
You know, there's people from all over the country going to this thing. So it was interesting to hear where everyone was from.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Then the next festival had locals tickets that I believe were only $40. So Jed offers.
We can accept those.
I already bought some, but.
Letting the board know. Think they're under that threshold. $50 with taxes.
Um, I just one thing I did read through the, the town's emergency operations plan and I'm keeping a running list of comments. So whenever it's appropriate to. Share those. I have it ready to go.
Is there a plan to update that in the future?
So I think, you know, the idea is we'll go have the training opportunities in early August. Um, for the board and then why it's fresh in your mind, rather than updating. The BV specific EOP is taking the Chaffey County Emergency Operations Plan and then making a BV specific appendix to that plan. Um, so kind of a hybrid of instead of having, you know, four different emergency operations planned within a. 20,000 person county that we consolidate into one and then it's one.
We're following our plan here and county is following their plan. Yeah, that makes sense.
Brian, do you have other things you'd like to tell us?
I don't think so. We got the intergovernmental meeting kind of lined up for July 29th. Um, we're hosting, we'll probably go ahead and do it at the airport again this year, uh, back to traditional structure as far as updates from DOLA, CHA. Uh, EDC. And then I think the topic of the night would be, um, discussing co-response. And their structure, where they were and where, and what it looks like going forward for that. Department, if you will, um, that service, um, their funding has been cut significantly. And so they face some challenges. That's all I got.
Okay.
All right. Um, so super excited about the neighborhood meeting edition and our code amendments tonight. So happy that went through. I think we're just looking at ways to continue. Um, public engagement and getting folks involved in transparency. And with that, we did post the code amendments to my BV, the draft code amendments, just really trying to. I know that we did our regular publishing through the newspaper and things like that, but, um, I think just. Again, trying to invite the community to weigh in so that we're making informed decisions for the community. That's really great. Um, Carbonette Street, I can't remember if I put this in my update or not, but we're just going to say it out loud. Uh, we authorized the CEOs for the first apartment building at Carbonette Street. So, um, and I believe that was June 26. Six, yeah. Um, so, uh, folks moved in that. And I just want to make it really clear that the town, the day that we were called out for the authorizations, we provided authorization. So I know that there's been some question on. On the delay and, and getting residents in there. Um, but as soon as town was able to get in there and provide authorizations, we did. So, um, I just want to shout out the town team. Because I know that that's a really important project and obviously we want to get folks moved in. And I just think town staff did a really great job. So that's really awesome. Um, in the update, the mention of the grocery store, again, it's, um, major site plan. So the board has the opportunity to follow it up. Additionally, there's an office building, minor site plan. And I would say, although it's not office building. And I don't expect that the board will want to call it up, but something unique is that you can call it major or minor site plans. And minor site plans don't have a required public hearing process. And so minor site plans are approved administratively. And so I do think that if you're talking about your ability to call up a project, um, if there's a minor site plan that peaks public interest or board of trustee interest. That's a, that's an opportunity that you have there where you would not be, um, taking that opportunity away from P and Z. Otherwise there wouldn't be a public hearing process for minor site plans. Uh, comp plan, we are nearing the end. Uh, our team put in a ton of work this last month to get out and talk to folks. Um, I just want to reiterate verbally that although the final draft is going to planning and zoning commission tomorrow night. I hope that planning and zoning commission continues to provide comments and feedback. And I would hope that when the plan comes before the board of trustees, that you feel empowered to provide feedback and continued, uh, comments. I know that with the final draft of a document, you may feel some sense of urgency to get it across the finish line, but we want to do this right. Um, and I know that Joel and I are still providing comments with our review. And so, um, when it comes before you, please feel empowered to, to provide feedback. And if that means that the document will need to come before you again at a later date for formal adoption. I would strongly encourage that that's the path that we take. Um, I've talked to Paul Andrews and his team is preparing a submission for the crossing apartments, which is the next phase. It has taken a couple of iterations, but I just wanted to share that while they were thinking that they were going to do all one bedroom units, they're actually now exploring a mix of studio. One bedrooms and two bedrooms, um, based on some feedback that they received, uh, on what would best serve the community, not from me. I don't know that. But from, uh, folks that they're working with. Um, so that will be a project that's coming in and given that it's an affordable housing project, we will give it. As much urgency as we can to get it reviewed quickly and, and approved quickly. Um, and I think that that's really it for me and planning right now.
How many people have moved in? How many, how many units have been taken at the?
When I went for authorization, they had 15 units that were lined up. Um, I have not followed up with them to understand what their occupancy looks like at this point, but I can do that and provide you an update.
Thank you.
Yes.
Jeff.
Seems smooth on the legal front. No lawsuits or anything.
Yeah, no, thanks for having me up. It's good to meet everybody in person without having been before. So appreciate it. Um. You know, I feel a bit like a lot of your meetings go so smoothly. You don't need a lot of legal advice, you know, um. A little bit different than the old days when I think I was involved a little bit more, but most of our work is done in the background. Really? Um, but yeah, no, it's nice to meet you all in person too. So maybe I'll make it a little bit of a regular attendance, but. Saves you a lot of money having me do remotely and saves me a lot of time too. So.
Oh, yeah.
Appreciate it. I just want to make sure you're getting the legal work you need and that you expect. So. If you want anything differently, just let me know. We're happy to accommodate. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Nothing tonight, man.
Okay, Joel.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Philip.
I would love to know, when were the old days?
I know.
Real old days. I think I was telling somebody that I think one of my first meetings here was when. You had on the agenda a new sexually oriented business ordinance and you also had, um, the marijuana regulations. And this place was hacked. I've never seen anything like it since, uh, or before anywhere else. So that was a good introduction. And you had a couple of lawsuits, one or two lawsuits going full, full speed too. So. It was, it was an interesting start to the.
Now it's great, great to see you, Jeff.
Oh yeah. Thank, thank you. It's good to see you, buddy. So you're a great client. I, I have been your attorney since around 2008. Been a long time. Amazing. I haven't aged of it.
Thanks, Sajana, for all the work on the handbook and for being here tonight. Um, exciting to get that done. Uh, just want to mention the, the sales tax for April was in your, in your pocket and using water imagery. Uh, it was good to see, uh, April bounce back up, um, getting some bubbles, you know, we're not flat, we're not boiling yet. The laws increased. So year to date to 2.6% up. A lot of that's driven by the county contribution, which is interesting. We don't really understand. Why the town, town portion of that is 1.3% up. County, county contributions, five and a half percent up. So. Um, we've been in talks with them like, dude, do you know why? We know, uh, Slide is following the, the same pattern as we are, same trend as we are. Uh, so not really sure why, I'm glad, but anyway, so good, good April. Good. That's it.
I would like to thank, um, Jeff and Catherine, we helped on the employee handbook.
Yeah, I'll give all the credit to Catherine. She did all the work. So yeah, I think I might've talked to her about it a couple of times. So.
She did an awesome job, right? Having her assistance with. Also thank you to Philip and Brian for your help on the handbook as well. Nice to have it done.
It is. Yeah. Another five years. The laws won't change for at least another four or five months.
Uh, it's our Christmas in July fun drive campaign. So if you want to donate to your local news media nonprofit group, we would appreciate it. And we're going to have a Christmas in July celebration at the airport on the 24th from six to eight. So we'll have information about like tickets and that sort of stuff going up early next week. So if you want to come and support us, we would appreciate that.
Thanks Charlie.
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
All right. Uh, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Yeah, let's go home.